Feed, right?
I thought Janie was working on that and I presume that tomorrow all this gets uploaded to whatever the city YouTube channel is.
She was hoping she had Facebook feed working tonight.
Right.
I just did the go live function and are being recorded now.
Good work, Janie. It's exactly seven o'clock. Welcome one and all. And everyone's assembled for our financial work session and I will kick it off to guess Jim.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. First, I just want to start, do you have any general questions from our last session that we maybe did not answer that we want to get started with first? Okay, if not, let's assume everyone has the packet of materials either on the screen or Janie, you'll pull them up. So if we go to page 29 and page 30, which are significant budget cuts. And we'll review the changes that have occurred since the last time we were together and they are very minimal. You'll note on page 29 in front of you now that tourism came back with some additional cuts in their budget. Very helpful to all three of our local entities, Rockbridge County, City of Buena Vista, and of course us. I don't know if Dennis wants to fill us in a little bit on that board meeting this morning, if it's appropriate now or not, but
I'm happy to.
There was a lot of discussion there and it worked out again, I think, very well for us.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that now, or if you want to wait until the regular meeting, I can talk about it then, whatever makes sense to you guys. But I actually, actually, maybe now because there is a, there is an issue that I want to point out. So anyway, the board met and we looked at our budget, we tried to figure out how we could best support the localities and we came up with a plan for the next five quarters to give 20% refunds to the localities for the next three quarters and then the last two quarters of fiscal year 21, a 15% refund and that for the city works out to roughly $65,000 for, for tourism, it's a $180,000 hit, but we think we can do it. But in order to do that, we had to eliminate our jurisdictional marketing grant program. And the reason why I wanted to bring that up is because Main Street Lexington and I were both hoping to use that, those, those funds for the marketing grant program to reimburse Main Street Lexington for the highway signs, which is a $4,400 expense. So that marketing program is going away, so tourism won't be able to do that. So my hope is that we can earmark $4,400 from the savings that tourism is providing to Lexington this year to Main Street Lexington to reimburse them for money that she's already outlaid in anticipation of that. We figured it was better to have the money at the localities discretion rather than within tourism. If we had kept it within tourism and held on to the marketing program, that would have been a $15,000 expense. It would be 5,000 for each jurisdiction. So it made better sense to push it down to the jurisdictions and let Lexington pay that fund. So that's, that's how we did that, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, heads up about that.
And to that issue, if we turn to page 28.
Jim, before you go forward, can I make a comment? This is Gary. Those savings that you just looked at for tourism, those are just for the four quarters of fiscal year 21. And it is net of that marketing grant that Dennis just spoke about. It's net of that 4,400. Thank you.
Well, that's what I was going to mention, Gary. If we look on page 28 of the different budgetary savings, we'll see the bottom line is tourism. Ninety-seven, ninety-four, which is a reduction in the regional tourism contribution for the current fiscal year, less the grant to Main Street Lexington.
That's, that's great. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm sure Main Street Lexington will appreciate that too.
So, so we've made that, as Gary said, we've made that adjustment anticipating that it seemed the right thing to do. And that's our recommendation to you in the budget. So we did account for it. Now back to page 20 or to 30, I should say, let's go back to page 30, please.
Can I just ask one question on that? I'm not, I did see it somewhere when I was reading the pack, I'm not seeing it now. Are we talking about, we will cover it for Main Street for 21, FY21?
Actually, they would have been reimbursed. Rebecca paid the bill, the $4,400 bill in January. And the expectation was that we would have the funds from our April payment from the regions. And so they've eliminated the thing, both for fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. So we won't be able to reimburse her in April for that $4,400. So it is, my biggest concern is to make sure that they're reimbursed for what they've already outlaid. Now whether, what the city in Main Street Lexington wants to do in fiscal year 21, if we want to continue with that, we need to consider that, that funds. But that's, that's for another day, but I'm more concerned about the outlay that Main Street Lexington has already made that we.
And, and that's fine, but since we're doing the budget, I think we should look at 21 too.
And I think they did. I think you guys, Jim and Gary, you both, you covered both ones in the fourth quarter, Jim and.
I did, I did not have it included in FY21, Gary, unless you made that adjustment.
The 50,000 on 12 is net of, next year's 4,400, but we're not taking into account 4,400 for the current fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
But there's probably, Jim, enough savings other than those savings that we identify for current year that we probably can scrap together $4,400.
Sure, sure. Okay. Looking at the significant budget changes on page 30, I believe it is now. The sec, the center set of numbers, you'll see the total expense cut is 998. Below that made available to contingency is 43,000 and then total expense modifications are 955. What that is telling you is that in the budget that we are now recommending, we've cut expenses by $955,000. However, we've also allowed $43,000 to accumulate in that contingency line in case we needed it for some small expenses during the fiscal year. So the total expenses that have been cut in this budget is really the $998,000 figure. Because we have not assigned that contingency to anything. It could drop down to the bottom line of total expense modifications. We left it in and just chose to leave it in in case some small expenses come up through the year. Or, or a department says, hey, I missed something and I need a few thousand dollars. So it's there. It can be drawn on as contingency or it can be put into that bottom line savings, but the total is still $998,000 that have been cut from the budget. Any questions on that? Okay, if you drop down below that to the numbers below that, you'll see the options not recommended and some additions there. We, near the bottom, they're highlighted, eliminate the discretionary agency funding could be a potential option. Also to keep the police chief position vacant for the full fiscal year could be a potential option as well. And you can see what those two numbers generate. And in addition to what we had there at the last time we were together, the total then would be 383,434. And other options that are not included in the budget cuts at this point, but potentially as we go down the road, they're there for consideration.
Can I ask a question about the police chief search? How long? I mean, is it most likely going to take six months regardless on that?
I would say so at this time, yes, absolutely. I mean, frankly, none of us could focus in the next month or two anyway on it with this budget and COVID-19 and any number of other things. And, you know, I'm not sure in this environment, if it would be wise to try and fill a position like that, because how many people are going to be willing to move from their current positions or focus on again? Good law enforcement personnel, they're focused on what they're doing in their current communities, I would think, the majority of them.
So we will likely see some savings from that. Even if we don't advocate for, for that cut, most likely we'll probably see about half of that anyway.
Some portion of it would carry over to next fiscal year, absolutely.
Are we paying Mark a stipend for being interim?
Yes, we are.
But we still save this 99.7?
That's the number I guess Gary calculated. Is that correct, Gary?
Yes, in the way we calculated that number, since I don't know what you're actually paying Mark right now. I made the assumption that for next year, if we were to pay him what we had budgeted initially for police chief. And we, and we already had two months savings factored into the original budget proposal. We took 10/12ths of what Mark's current position costs hard for wages and benefits. So this is 10/12ths of the captain's position.
Okay.
So that's a conservative estimate of actually the savings in all likelihood. Okay. Other questions on, on those options? And again, for discussion purposes, I think if you as council members have options you want us to explore, we probably could put other options on the table because we may need them, at least for discussion purposes.
So could I just ask a question again about the agency funding is still, so we're recommending, I just don't see the first page, there are 10%, correct? That's still.
Correct.
Recommended cut. Okay.
Budget, the budget as it is recommended to you now contains a 10% cut to agencies, that is discretionary agencies. And the option that we saw is, is if we want to exercise another option when we face other rounds of cuts from the state.
Right.
Cut them 100%.
Okay. Thanks.
And on the SRO.
Go ahead.
On the SRO position, is, so we've already applied for the grant?
Yes.
And is there any way we can hold off on the grant till January, say, we don't want to make a decision or a start date till January, till we see what the economy's like?
I would not say definitively, there's no opportunity to do that. But my belief is that if we don't want to use it, another community may pick it up. But in this environment, I'm not sure that's true any, in any community. So, you know, potentially we could. My understanding is in the past is once you turn it down, it goes to another community.
On, on that subject, I did meet with Rebecca Walters this morning for, for a while to discuss that very issue. And as a result of that conversation, I'm, for the time being, backing off on, on my resistance to an SRO for the, for the next, for the next year. Contingent upon getting that, that grant funding.
For the. If I, if I may, when we look at our expenses and areas where we could cut expenses, I feel like it's, because if we're not comfortable with the revenue projections and, you know, at what point do we owe it to the community to evaluate our revenue projections conservatively? Because that will dictate if we need to cut expenses. And when I think about the fact that the fall could be a, you know, your guess is as good as mine and scared, scary to me. And when I think about parents' weekends and homecomings and home football games, you don't know, I don't know if they are going to occur. We have no idea if we'll have an extra, you know, 3,000, 3,500 residents living within the city limits of college students or not. We have no idea. And so I wonder if we are conservative enough when all of our projections for, for revenue is a lot less than the county. When they look at, when their projections are 30% declines in sales tax, 30% declines in, in each category. And we continue to think sales tax could be 10%. It concerns me and if we, and if the rest of council is comfortable and just believes that parents' weekends will occur for BMI and WNL and homecomings are going to occur and both the schools will have five home football games and people are going to be staying in our hotels, then, then so be it. But if, but if we're not, then I feel like we need to tinker with the revenue projections because that'll lead us to need to change our expenses.
You know, I, I, I hear you, David, but I, I, I mean, I, I'm not sure. I, I was, I was comfortable that VML was probably the best projection that, or the Virginia's first cities was like the best projection we could get. I agree with you. It may be worse than that and maybe we have to dip into the reserve fund and maybe we have to come back and make some additional cuts. But if we start cutting to the bone now and things do come back, then I, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't, I guess I'm comfortable moving forward with the, the BFC projections.
And, and of course, Virginia First Cities does their projections and their formulas. And I don't know if they drill down to the fact of how much our economy revolves around institutions of higher learning as opposed to general economies opening up, if you will.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's that level of detail. And since we're boots on the ground here, we might know more than they do about our own city and how our city might be dealing with the effects of this. And so I'm of the thought of being very conservative. I'm of the thought of actually tying some of our expenditures to revenue projections and as they might change, which is actually something that the state does routinely. They tie a lot of their expenses to revenue projections. And I just feel that some of these expenses, we could say, hey, you know what? If we're two for two on two parents' weekends, that's a good sign and therefore we can open the spigots a little bit to do things that are in the budget. But until we know that the fall looks like we are crossing our fingers for it to look like, then it might be irresponsible to be, to be only projecting a 10% cut to our sales tax.
Well, let me respond to that, please. I think the issue is if we take a conservative approach, which may or may not be warranted. What Dennis said, I think, is going to come true. We have to start cutting staff in July 1. We have to cut programs and services July 1 and assume that that's the worst case scenario or a very conservative approach. Why cause that damage when in fact we don't know? We could start cutting November 1st if July and August turn out to be bad months. Because at this point in time, if we cut, it's going to be very difficult to put those services back in place. We're going to lose staff and we're going to lose operational capabilities that we can't replace a month later.
Of course, you'll note that I didn't say cut staff.
That's all there is, Dennis. There's nothing left.
It's David speaking, but I, a 3% raise is still in this plan, am I not correct, in January 2021?
That's correct.
Right. And so just as an example, that's one item that is a, is a potential item that is not just there in FY21. It's there in FY22 and 23. I mean, that is a long-term liability that we don't know what the economy will look like. And I guess not for me to run right to that because you'll remember last year, city staff and the city manager recommended a 0% raise. And I was the one that advocated hard for the 1% raise. And that was last year, they wanted a 0% raise in a very strong economy where we were raising taxes. Now, I'm reluctant to put it in the budget of a 3% raise in January when I, I would rather have the two parents' weekends occur and us know that we, and we enact it later. I would rather almost slide that money to, to unprogrammed or contingency, if you will. And if COVID-19 has subsided and universities are open and parents' weekends are occurring, then we can program, we can allocate those funds.
Well, of course, since it is in place only for January 1, we would in fact, in that case, have the opportunity to look at a full four or five months of performance and revenues before we would be committed to that.
When we look at our counterparts and we're proposing the largest salary increase in the last seven years when some economists are projecting a recession or worse, are we, are we in step with our counterparts? Other small cities and counties proposing a 3% pay increase?
Of course we are not. And I will say that we made a number of changes, including the ones we've been discussing in the last couple of days. And Gary and Jake worked hard at that. At, earlier this afternoon, I had asked about putting in only 2% because I thought that was more logical for any number of reasons. Again, it's an option that's on the table. We can make, you as city council can make that cut at any time along with those other options. But bottom line is if you want us to choose a conservative revenue figure because you can determine what you think the revenues will be, then that's up to you. We don't believe that that's valuable at this point in time to get very conservative. Maybe we can relook at those figures a little bit. I have no problems with that. But to say it'll be 30, 30, 30% loss like Rockbridge County has apparently done, wonderful. I've not seen or heard that in any of the models that we've come up to look at. Now, again, things are changing even from a week and a half or two ago, when those models started to be developed. It is getting a little more apparent that it's going to be a long-term decline or a longer term. And some of the models are now saying we were optimistic with the revenues. But that doesn't still give me a lot of data or information to make a decision that indicates what should the revenue calculation be?
Uh, we can maybe. Perhaps to David's point about compensation increases going into effect in January for the remainder of the fiscal year. Maybe it might be worthwhile to put into place sort of a heads up that, you know, for those increases, if, if we, if we don't have the revenue, we, we, you know, we can't support the, the compensation increases. If things are better than we expect, we can move forward with those. But if they're, if it's gloom and doom on the other side, you know, there's difference between irresponsibility and recklessness as far as, you know, projections and one have you. And we're in such a state of flux as, as Jim just pointed out daily that it, it's hard to find a bearing to, to, to point the ship. So to erring, erring on the side of caution while trying to be as responsible as possible, I think we're all facing some, some pretty serious challenges. So to, to go back to the beginning of the point, to, to put in to effect somehow, if we don't have the funds, because our revenues are shortfall greater than expected, that the compensation increases that would go into effect in January may not be possible.
Funding the theater at Limekiln and fine arts in Rockbridge still at 100%?
They are at 100% because there is a Virginia Commission of Arts grant, dollar for dollar match. And frankly, just my opinion, if we can bring a dollar into the community for every dollar we spend, that's a pretty good investment, even in today's economy. And I don't want to give up those extra dollars.
I wonder if dollars spent on food and relief for folks that might rely on some of our nonprofits that, that, that reach out to people in need also has a great return on like an extra dollar to RARA. If that return on investment is, is better than a one for one dollar potentially. And again, no disrespect at all to, because all of our agencies are valuable, but you know, I, I, I just have a hard time justifying cutting RARA or some of our other nonprofits 10%. And then funding organizations that have the opportunity that maybe don't have their programs, first of all, or they have the opportunity to, to charge $1 extra per ticket or, or something to make up the, what we might not be able to provide. I really believe strongly in, in all of our nonprofits and I know you all do. And so, but it's just the hard reality that I think I need to say.
Okay.
I would, I somewhat agree with what David's saying. I think the budget should be predicated on, we're going to reevaluate everything in October. And that's why I'm not worried at this point about the pay increase, though I don't really see that it's going to, that we're going to be able to do it. But if we want to put it off till October, till we have a better reading, I don't, that's fine with me. I don't think we should be adding any positions at this point. That's why I have an issue with that SRO. If we can push it off till January, making a decision, I'd be okay with that and leaving it in. But to do that this summer, I don't think we can. And I think we probably should at some point, if we can talk about the, the agencies and maybe cut them down further and tell them it's contingent again on what happens by October. Maybe we'll put back some of those funds come then.
I have to say, I totally agree with, with Leslie about the, the SRO position. I, you know, as David points out, fiscal year 22 is going to be a problem. And even though it's not that big of expense this year, it's going to be a bigger expense then. And that's not something that we can put off the decision on. So I, I mean, I would, I would rather, rather than taking away the, the, the pay raise, I would, I would definitely rather maybe put a hold on the SRO, even though we're going to lose the, you know, the grant matching funds. To me, that would be my preference. But as, as far as the outside agencies, I would say that they need to be able to plan their budgets the same way we do. So I, I, I think that, you know, it, we're, we're talking about $54,000, is it now? I don't think that that's, I, I don't think that, I don't think that that's a big enough difference to us that we should be holding them hostage to those funds because it is a big deal to them, I guess. So, or some of them at least. So that I would, I would rather be, you know, give them a hard figure, whether it's 10% or whatever, and try to stick with that so they can plan accordingly.
Obviously, so much of this is a give and take and this budget season is so different from our prior years with million dollar surpluses and things of that nature that we've experienced. So it's, all of this discussion is very healthy. Of course, Jim has brought forward a budget for us to consider and David's points and other folks' points of where you, how we may want to look at this. We're still in that process of tweaking it and making sure we're looking at it from all angles. One thing I would suggest is, you know, whether it's Jim or David or someone else, Jim Regenbold is available to have a one-on-one conversation. And I feel certain he would drill down into our community and say, you're looking more like 20%, not 10% or 5% or whatever his numbers are. Because he gave us, if I recall, statewide numbers. So that's one action unless somebody on council objects, Jim and/or David calling and scheduling a time to talk with Jim and find out what his numbers are for us. That, that can help guide us on, are, are we on target or should we be a little more aggressive with marking down our revenue expectations? And then part of this whole process is figuring out, you know, what we evaluate. Because Limekiln brings money, people and economics to the community. RARA does a great job. There are lots of other things going on, like the community foundation is planning to give grants. And I'm aware that several people who are making contributions to RARA, so their budget really, I think, may be robust this year. But let's face it, the demand is going to be pretty substantial as well. And again, how, you know, do our dollars make or break them? I don't think so. It, it's something for us to evaluate, but where we spend our money speaks volumes of what we're about. And first and foremost, to public safety, health and wellbeing of our citizens and education is the, are the cornerstones of our existence.
I guess the only thing I would comment is I don't think any, I, I, I think. I guess the only thing I would comment is I don't think any, I, I, I think Jim Regenbold does a fantastic job of financial forecasting, but I don't think anybody can tell us right now what's going to happen. There's too many unknowns. That's why I just think we need to be a little bit more conservative, but we also need to keep in mind, we're going to have to reevaluate the whole thing in, in a few months. Um, you know, definitely by October, thing, we have no idea how to predict.
Well, one thing I'll, and this is a question, Gary, my recollection was, um, doing a 25% reduction, you're making the assumption that there is zero revenue in July, August and September. If you want to look at it that way, that, that's a quarter. If that gets disseminated, you know, um, for the entire year or those three months, that's a big hole. We don't know how much the, how long this is going to last. If we're still under, if you will, house arrest until September, this budget's out the window anyway. So we, we do have to keep our hand on the throttle, but I, I think Jim Regenbold is, um, the, the best resource that we have um, i- available to us. There may be some others, but certainly we're, we're members of Virginia first and, um, he could give us some, some good numbers and, uh, part of the exercise, I can't help but think is if Jim says, gee, your, your numbers are a little light, you should do 20% on, uh, uh, sales and, uh, meals and lodging, you're looking more at 35% in our little neck of the woods because of the makeup of our community. We, it'd be nice to know, you know, the next week to be able to look at and say, gee, instead of looking at a million dollars or a million three, we're looking closer to a $2 million hole. And again, knowing that, do we pull from fund balance and hope that it's a, a mild or a short U recovery? Or do we, uh, rework our budget to pay for what we can afford and do have layoffs and, uh, uh, reorganize the services that we provide as our city?
Well, we're about halfway through the work session. It's been great conversation, but I do have a few more pieces of information as I, I want to share. So if we could do that, and then we could continue the discussion perhaps. And if we could go back to page 28, please. Again, you'll see that we have in the current fiscal year an additional savings of $281,000 above the expenses, or excuse me, above the revenues we believe or have we projected we're losing this year. So what I would recommend is that that money, one, we can track that through the end of June. But whatever that savings ends up being should be reallocated into the FY '21 fiscal year to make up for any of the uncertainties or unknowns that we may face. So that would be available as well as those other expenses that we saw on page 29 or those other options that have not been put in place yet. If you looked at this savings of $281,000 plus the contingency fund of $433,000 and the options that are available, knowing we haven't decided, council hasn't decided which ones with any of those to cut, but they're on the table. The total of those three numbers is additional $708,000 available to soften the blow of perhaps weaker revenues than we anticipate. Or as I was looking at it, looking at what happens when the state acts a week to 10 days from now. We would have $708,000 available potentially to look at what those state cuts might be to us. And if we turn to page two now, please. You'll see, um, one, whoops, one, two, three, fourth line from the top in revenues. Oh, are they there? State support, the total state support we receive is $6,575,750, $705. That's both schools and general fund. So if we received a 10% cut in state revenues, that $708,000 that is available could handle that cut. I just point that out that we do have some flexibility yet to deal with other cuts in revenue or soft revenue. Not dismissing the fact that yes, I'll talk to Jim Reggeball. Yes, we'll relook at those revenues and maybe get a little more conservative. But, um, we've put together a pretty good package of cuts already of almost a million dollars, 998,000, plus this additional $700,000 that's available. Should we have to, um, deploy those potential other sources of revenue? So we put together about $1.6 million so far without touching city reserves with no tax increase.
So this budget, nothing takes into account what the governor has already signaled he's cutting?
Correct. It does not.
Okay. So the school raises are still in there, even though they've signaled that that money's gone and, and, and everything. Okay.
Correct. I mean, I've asked Rebecca at the schools what she could tell me and she said she just couldn't give me any information. The governor's made his proposal, but you know, the general assembly has to act. And we do, one of my final comments here is we probably need to have another work session the week of May, you know, the week, first week of May, when we have our next council meeting. Wait until the fifth of May, find out what the general assembly has done. And with that additional information, what I presented to you tonight, then we can start dealing with a little more accurately what is known at that point. But I wouldn't say it's all gloom and doom. I, I think we've, you know, we've maintained core services. We've proposed other options that are available to US City Council to discuss a- as far as more expenses, more cuts. And that gives us about $700,000, again, of some flexibility to absorb some of that, what might come next. And as everyone knows, if we find in July, August, September, things have changed. Yes, we can adjust the budget at that time too. And say revenues haven't, we haven't recovered, crowds aren't there, students aren't there, the parents' weekends aren't happening. So we've got to make more cuts. But with what we know, I think we're pretty well positioned at this point. So more conversation or discussion based on that additional information or outlook, if you will.
The silence is deafening.
All right. I, I just want to get back to this. The, the, I, I, I'm, I'm coming back to the SRO position. When would we have to make a decision? I mean, we would have to hire that person pretty soon, right? I mean, when, when would that person, when would that position be filled?
You know, back to the SRO, I was tempted today to even say, let's cut that. It needs to be cut very soon, but I felt like we could leave it another week or two.
Okay. Because of, of all the options not recommended, I mean, the other ones, if we had to, if, if, if total disaster, we, well, we could later eliminate recycling. And we would have until January to determine what to do about the pay increase. But the SRO position, once we, once we pulled that trigger, they were kind of stuck with that decision. And I, for that reason, I, I, of, of all the things on your options not recommended, that would be the one that I would probably. I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but that, that's the one that I feel like maybe we need to do.
I, I think if we can wait to fill that, if it's a possibility to January, as, as was suggested, um, and contingent upon the grant funding, I, I guess that's implied, uh, to, to go ahead with it, the, the opportunity, if, because I think if, if we do wait to January, uh, to fill that, the, 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 the opportunity to uh, learn and observe how that position can function and, and what i- i- and it's, it's only a one-year commitment, um, as I think has been illustrated. Um, the opportunity of what can be learned from, uh, that person on the floor and learn what's useful, what isn't useful can be carried on um, through later years if, if, if possible. And uh, that was sort of my takeaway from my, from my meeting with, with Rebecca today. I, I think it's a valuable opportunity. Uh, I think, I still think the idea of an SRO as it's traditionally structured is, is a little troubling for me, but the opportunity to learn and observe what is, is helpful and useful in the long term is, uh, worthwhile.
If we cut this or, um, delay it, do we have a commitment from the police department to continue the level of support that they've been offering already?
Yes, there's no reductions from the police department. So, um, they're going to perform and provide all the duties and activities that they currently perform and provide.
Okay.
Jim, I'm glad you suggested, Jenny, could take us back to the options page rather than this all fun summary. Uh, since we're talking about options now.
It's a good idea. Thank you, Gary. And I guess, you know, speaking of options, to me, keeping the police chief position vacant is easy enough to do. It puts some stress in the police department. I've spoken with Mark, I've spoken with, uh, Captain Frost and they think it's something that they prefer not to do, but they'd understand it. That, you know, we don't cut other resources if they can continue to function without that position. I would guess in my mind, the SRO position of it's important is probably less so than some of our existing positions and programs that we already have in place. Hate to lose it, but we all hate to lose any of the things we're looking at on this list. Um, you know, after that, it's a, it's a question for council, I guess. Recycling has value. It reflects the values of the community. Do we want to cut it? Do we want to cut the, any, all of the pay raises and say to our employees who are entering a long stretch, maybe of difficult performance under difficult economic conditions? That we don't want to invest in you at this juncture. It's, you know, it's a message of sorts, talks about our values and all of these things do. The agency funding is the same way, of course. I, I don't disagree. What I would say though, at some point is that again, we've done, we've provided these options about, you know, $700,000 worth of additional funds that could be found or cut. When do we call on the reserves? Gary, do we know how much we have that are available in reserves that the, the city council could expend above what is required for us to maintain?
My recollection is that our fund balance as of the end of June 30th, uh, 2019, we had a bit more than $5 million more in unassigned fund balance than what the required policy of 20% of operating expense. I believe it's something north of $5 million extra that we could dip into.
So my point is, if we can't find a way to find the next 200,000 or 300,000 out of the cuts that are available, because we don't want to cut recycling, we don't want to cut agencies, maybe $200,000 or $300,000 a year for the next couple of years out of fund balance, isn't such a bad investment. And we've got the money there. At some point in time, you know, I'm not pushing that. You've seen I put a lot, we, we've worked hard and I give Gary and Jake and our leadership team, all of our local and regional agencies, a lot of credit coming to the table and making this work. And we would lose something as a community if we made all the cuts that are possibly here before us. When would we invest in the community and pull out of that 5 million plus in excess fund balance? So that we didn't have to lose the investments we'd made in past years and we could still continue to hold on to that investment toward our future. To me, that's a, a, a question that I, we all get caught in the numbers, myself included. But sometimes we have to look beyond that and say, how much, as opposed to David, how much more revenue may we lose pessimistically? How much of our fund balance optimistically should we invest? Because we want to keep all of the things or the vast majority of those things that we've created and have value in this community.
A- and, and respectfully, I mean, you can maybe call me, say that I'm being pessimistic. Uh, I might be being realistic. Um, a- a- and, and so, you know, I think what our city is going through right now is what a lot of families are going through and a lot of businesses are going through. Look at their core functions and what they are able to afford right now, given the state of affairs. And we, we absolutely have the fund balance. And I do recall a work session, I think it was maybe less than two months ago, where we talked about our fund balance and we were given strong guidance during that work session to not look at it as, uh, available. I, I, I've been on council for over five years and we've talked about the fund balance numerous times and it has always been, don't look at it with, uh, wide eyes like it's yours to spend. It, it really shouldn't be. I mean, I, that's drilled in, into me. Maybe that's, maybe, you know, that's the message that I've received a lot. Um, so if now, you know, we're hearing something different, I believe it's for emergencies totally for one-time expenditures is what I do believe. Uh, otherwise I take the approach of living within our means a little bit, um, much like a lot of our business owners do and, and families do. Um, so I, um, appreciate the guidance and, and your, your advice and, and I'm glad that we'll be able to reforecast things during the fall, uh, as we have a better picture of everything. But right now, if you were to ask our business owners in Lexington, if tooth, if the next fiscal year, they would only feel a decrease of 10% sales, they would be thrilled. I think they would all take that right now. And right now, we're projecting that because we're projecting that sales tax will only go down 10%. And I think a lot of business owners are, are expecting that their sales might be off more than 10% in the next 12 months. And, and so that's all. I, I, I apologize if I'm a pes- being pessimist, but I think I'm being realistic.
Okay.
And, um, I feel that we owe that to our citizens who are staring down tax bills in June, staring down tax bills in December. And, you know, you look at some of the surrounding counties and they've wiped away personal property taxes for the next year. Nelson County, you know, and, and so I, I just, you know, I want to do what's fair and right. And I always have to our employees. I think back to last year. Um, but I, I, you know, I, I hope, I apologize for, for being pessimistic. Um, that's not my intent.
And I didn't mean it at a personal level. I meant as we look at our future, do we look at it with some optimism and invest in the future? Or do we pull back and say, we cannot afford to invest? If we didn't have the fund balance, I wouldn't even be mentioning this at all. But again, that's why, in my view, we do have a fund balances for these rainy days. And if we use that once every 20 years, I think we're being very, um, realistic and very practical as to how we treat our community.
I think about the fund balance for the purchase of the property. I think about the fund balance for the Moores Creek Dam. I think about the fund balance for the bridges that we're putting off, that we're not investing in capital, you know, capital infrastructure and, and improvements that, that those are one-time items that the, that the fund balance, because something pops up that we must pay for. Um, so that, that's all I've, but.
I heard, um, that there's a very good chance, um, and maybe Leslie, you might have more insight to this, that Washington and Lee and colleges will most likely be opening up in January.
I hadn't heard that.
Welcome, Doug.
So I, I, I just, you know, I have to say, I'm, I'm not, I wish it would be 10%, um, but I, I'm quite concerned that, um, our projections right now in the revenue for real estate, excuse me, for all those, the sales tax, um, is quite low. And possibly the meals and lodging tax are going to take more of a hit than 25%. If, if, uh, this is the case that VMI and WNL, um, will not be opening up in the fall. So and I, and I've been hearing this too from you know, other people, other sources. So.
We, we certainly, uh, can't work on rumors. I had heard VMI that, uh, General P had suggested that they were planning for cadets not coming. And I can't imagine a General P had suggested that they were planning for cadets not coming, and I can't imagine a virtual rat line next year. But I never would have expected the situation that we find ourselves in. We've got about 10 minutes before our regular meeting's supposed to start, and you know, this, this whole process is, is challenging, and I think it's important for everyone to express their opinions and observations and, and have it rooted in strategy and come with recommendations, if at all possible, because, you know, David, 10% is not the right number. Is it 20, 25, knowing? Welcome your recommendation, because none of us know. If somebody could tell us when this horrible COVID situation was going to be over, we can make better plans, but we're still in the, the twilight zone of not knowing when this will come to a conclusion. And we can only come to an agreement of of ideas of what we want to accomplish or what numbers we're comfortable, well, we're not comfortable with any of the numbers, and justifiably so. And it isn't just our community, obviously. It's around the entire country and to a great extent around the globe, so that adds its own challenges. I share in your pessimism for the projections, but I'm really optimistic that once we have this behind us, that Lexington will be even more desirable than it was. We'll have more people at football games and alumni weekends and come to the Horse Center and all those things. But the economic destruction that we're experiencing right now, families' loss of wealth and people unemployed is in really incalculatable at this point.
Gary, quick question. What's the, I don't have the full budget in front of me. What's the, the percentage, the 998,000? Whatever that number is, what's the percentage of the total budget? What kind of reduction is that of the total budget?
Okay, I'm digging here. Michelle, those savings are coming out of the general fund, and our general fund originally proposed budget was a little bit over 19 million, so 1 million, about that, 19 million is somewhere just north of 5%. Probably less than 6%, but more than 5%.
Yeah, I mean, overall, you know, that's not really a whole lot. I'm just, just, you know, I, I think we need to be prepared to, to think about 10%, but that's just my opinion, so.
Anyone else have any other questions or feelings on the police chief, SRO, other recommendations that have been made? I'll just make the observation, as it relates to recycling, we made a huge investment at the worst possible time in containers and truck to collect recycling. There's virtually zero market and very limited what we collect at this point. And it seems to be a very expensive proposition. I don't, I don't think that we should surrender and not have a recycling program, but the complexion of it going forward, we may still need to tweak, or I encourage you to think about what, what you all think that should look like going forward.
On that, I don't want to start a whole new topic when we're trying to wrap up, but I do think that's a good point, particularly from what I saw on our website. We're looking to hire a sanitation worker. So if we want to pare down that program, maybe more of a drop-off, having the dumpsters at Public Works at least for a while till we kind of reset, because I'm sure there is no plastics market right now with the price of oil what it is, but this might not be a bad time to do that. Take a little break with plans of starting up recycling when it makes sense again.
Well, to the point of looking at additional cuts, let us look at some other cuts. And maybe we'll use that 10% figure as a guide to see what we would need to do to reach that. And we can bring that back to you at our next meeting. Again, I would suggest we should meet on May 5th, which is a Tuesday, unless you as council would like to choose another date. That gives us about a week and a half after the General Assembly are coming into session on the 22nd. And hopefully, we would know something then that we can then take into account that evening and then use to make further changes till we can get to a budget on May 7th and adopt the budget.
I think it would be important to see what that looks like.
If there are no objections to that, why don't we take a five-minute break? I've got 7:55. You can freshen up or stretch your legs, or Chuck, watch out for that black bear coming off the mountain behind you.
Thank you, Gary, and thank you, Jim, and your staff, and Jake, sorry.
Thank you.
For, for all your work.
Indeed, indeed.
Gary and Jake have been pulling their hair out.
Yeah, not easy.
But, and I anticipate they will, do not need to join us for the 8 o'clock meeting. Welcome to, but since you're here, you can stay, but if you want to go on with your evening, I think, unless anyone has an objection, that should be fine.
Did you want Gary to give a little brief on the popular annual financial report since our VMI folks aren't joining us?
If you're not able to do it in his Steve, that'd be fine. He can join us and then drop off, if you'd like.
Okay, I'll stay on for that part of the meeting, and then I'll drop off. Thank you.
There are no other comments or questions for the work session. We'll stand adjourned for about four minutes and take it back up at 8 o'clock. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appointed hour of 8 o'clock on Thursday, April 16th. Welcome to the Lexington City Council meeting. And thank you all for being here, wherever you may be. It's good to, still a wild experience and a challenge for me to get used to Zooming, but thank you all for your patience as we work through this process. And thank you to Janie and the folks leading us through all of this. If you will join me, stand and for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the
United States of America and to the Republic stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
How about that? If I had Chuck's skills, I would have been able to put the flag up as my backdrop, I think. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any other items to come before councilor be added to the agenda? Hearing none will accept it as presented. And just as a matter of just checking, has Jared phoned in? Is he with us? I'm going to take that as a no. Do you know, Janie? It's okay, just.
I am not entirely sure. I do see the number at the bottom there, but I don't know if that's him or not.
Right.
That person is? Is it the news that, or?
Not sure. If you can unmute yourself and identify yourself, I'd love to know who's joined us. Very good. Going to jump straight into presentations, and I will call on Gary. Our cadets are not with us tonight, but Gary, if you could introduce the popular annual financial report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I hope your screen is showing up better than mine. On my screen, I'm seeing writing over top of the city manager's picture in popular annual financial report, but hopefully that's just my computer and not everybody else's. Again, this year, we were fortunate in that Dr. Bing Sheng, VMI, and two of her cadets, Captain David Singaro and Cadet Simon Roth-Hummer, worked with us to produce this document. And it highlights activities that went on in fiscal year 2019 and highlights some of the numbers out of the long, what's known as the CAFRA or the Consolidated Annual Financial Report, in attempts to put it in layman's terms. So we're very indebted to VMI and to this team of two cadets and their faculty advisor for working with the city to produce this document. With that being said, just within the last 24 hours, we posted on the city's website updated CAFRA report. And thanks to Councilman Strong's keen eyes. She noted that on the last page of that report, where it talked about the city's general fund revenues and expenditures, the number and the percentage was erroneous. So we have corrected that document, and the correct document is now on the city's website. So with that, that's all that I have to present, unless there are questions or comments by members of council. Janie, while you're going to the pages, it would be the very next page. I believe that those changes were made on.
Good work, Leslie, with the good eye. Members of council, have any questions or observations for Gary?
I will add and let you know that that number is Jared. Since he's on a phone, he can't unmute himself, so I will unmute him when he's ready.
Excellent. Thank you, Janie. Hearing no questions. Gary, thank you very much for overseeing always our finances and this project in particular, the investment in those cadets and the opportunity for them to get the skills and experience in working with something like this is invaluable, and we're very grateful to their time and talents for putting this all together. And I trust that we will include this in the weekly manager report, Jim and Janie, and share this far and wide for people who have a question about what the city's doing with their funds.
I do have one question. I went to the, while we were discussing this, I went to the city's homepage, and I'm trying to figure out exactly where that report is, is published, just for the benefit of the public that may be having the same issue I'm having.
Great question, Chuck. I believe that it's under the finance department and their links there to the popular annual report, as well as the entire audit report and our annual budgets.
Okay.
And Janie, is that something that can be in the weekly report linked? And hopefully on the, the front, front page there.
Yes, I will link it in the weekly, and I can situate it in the news feed on the front homepage of the website.
Terrific. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right.
This is Jared. Can y'all hear me now?
Sure.
I just want to point out, we should do a roll call to make sure that everybody is on and available, just for the record. And also officially announce that we're doing this pursuant to the emergency ordinance we passed at our last meeting.
Well, I'll make that declaration that we are conducting this meeting pursuant to the ordinance and vote that we took as authorized by the governor. Vote that we took last week, or last meeting, rather. And if you can confirm your attendance verbally, Ms. Hentsch. I think you're muted.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Strong?
Here.
Jairs?
Here.
Ms. Alexander? You're muted there. Unmute yourself, Marilyn.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Also attended's Jim Halas and Jake Adams and Gary Swink.
Yes, sir.
Anything I missed there, Jared, or does that suffice?
I think that'll cover it.
Thank you. I knew there was many reasons I wish you, I'm glad you're here, one of the many. Janie, if you can take us back to the agenda. I think the next item is boards and commissions, or rather reports of boards and commissions.
Are we going to approve the minutes?
Yeah. Correct. Had the minutes in your packet? And would ask for your consideration of the minutes from February 20 meeting.
I'll abstain because I was not present.
I'll move to present, approve the minutes as presented.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Hentsch?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Jairs?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Aye.
Ziegler. And Mr. Smith abstains. Thank you all. Janie, did we have any citizens' remarks or comments that were emailed or delivered?
We did not have any submitted.
Thank you, ma'am. And Jared, if you can confirm, that's our process at this point, or if somebody had zoomed in with us, they can be able to have the opportunity to speak, correct?
That's correct. If that's how council chooses to do it, there just needs to be some method. And I know the notice that went out said that folks could submit by email or mail to Janie. So absent anyone doing that, I think we're covered tonight.
Very good. Thank you. And for those listening at home or in the media, we welcome citizens' remarks and comments at every meeting. And if they have ideas on how we can work to balance our budget, we welcome those as well. Is nothing for consent agenda and no unfinished business that I'm aware of. I would move into boards and commissions and Blue Ridge Resource Authority. Mr. Smith.
There we go. Blue Ridge Resource Authority's public hearing on tipping fee rates has been postponed till next month, May 11th, I believe.
Very good. Main Street Lexington.
We met virtually on Tuesday and everyone's working from home, but they're getting a lot of things done. Task force has formed to respond to the COVID crisis. From a business perspective, it includes Main Street Lexington, tourism, the Chamber and the city. And they're meeting with businesses to provide, let them know what opportunities there are for either funding or loans. And the Chamber actually has a really good website with a lot of that information on it. They're also surveying business on what their funding needs are. There'll be a virtual concert tomorrow, April 17th, from seven to nine PM to fund the Community Foundation Relief Fund. And the funds for nonprofits, but they're also looking at how it can help businesses as well. So please get takeout from a local restaurant and turn on the face, go to the Facebook page for Main Street Lexington to tune into the virtual concert. Bruce Allen will be the emcee and there's about nine local musicians that are all going to perform from home. So it should be a lot of fun. And Kendall and Cornerstone are sponsoring the event. Main Street's applying for a $20,000 grant through the Main Street, through the National Main Street Program for Business Stimulus Program. And a portion, a component of that program is an employee relief fund. So we'll hear more about that later. They're looking at their budget and we, as we discussed at our work session, we've asked them to eliminate $8,000 for next year's budget. So they're looking at eliminating the awning and signs grants program. Some of the beautification program grants that they give out, and they're still looking for the remainder of that budget cut. The stay to stay pilot that we're supposed to have this summer in July is going to be moved hopefully to the fall. But it's kind of interesting, you know, the shift in paradigm about teleworking. It likely makes teleworking from Lexington look a lot more attractive to people living in the city. And I have to say, we're Lexington, Rockbridge County, we're in a great position because of the investment that all the localities made in Rena years ago, having broadband in most of our area, it really has made this crisis much more manageable. And then our, please remember that our downtown businesses are open. A lot of them, if you, you can call them and either order things online or make appointments to come in individually to look at things, but please remember that they are, they are open and this is an important time to shop locally. So it's not just the restaurants, but even a lot of the retailers are still there. So don't forget about them. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions about Main Street Lexington activities?
No, 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 not a question, but, but a comment. As, as a former downtown business owner mostly. And having survived the financial crisis of 2008 in the retail industry downtown, I've been, you know, ruminating over the current situation that we're dealing with and commiserating with, with our downtown and regional business community. And, and I appreciate, and this is something I guess I want to communicate to the, to the Main Street group is you know, currently we're, we're sensing and embracing a sense of urgency to help, you know, our downtown and regional business community, but I want everybody to keep in mind as we move forward, when we get to summer, that's when we're really going to hit the make or break period and as far as I'm concerned. It's going to be so much harder to maintain its sense of urgency to keep on and keep on and keep on and keep on. And and as we move forward, as we get closer to that, that May 28 line where we go from Memorial Day into the summer period, that's when a lot of our downtown and regional merchants are really going to feel the squeeze. So I guess, yeah, how do we get that messaging out there through our organizations like Main Street and the Chamber too? When we get closer to that, that May deadline, to, you know, maintain this, this level of support because it's going to be much more important than, than I think it is, you know, now is important. The summer's going to be even more important.
Yeah.
I was going to ask.
Pass it on.
$20,000 grant, Leslie. Is that, did they apply for that already or are they planning to?
They have already applied for it. They haven't heard back from it. And what I guess one of, I don't fully know all the details on the grant, but one of the things they're looking at is creating like a gift certificate program for, for downtown businesses with it.
I'm real concerned about whether they're going to get that or not, and I certainly hope they do. But I've been reading that that might be the pot of money that they ran out of this morning. But I'll look further into that for you if you want.
Well, and this is from Main Street, not from the government.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
From the Main Street program, right.
You're helping with payroll too?
No, well, there is, like I said, there's employee relief fund component and that's all I know. Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Leslie? I think it's also worth noting in the past number of years, Main Street Lexington's done a great job of tapping into the downtown beautification dollars that we've had. And of course, we've eliminated, planned to eliminate those from our budget for next year. So it'll be one less opportunity for, for Main Street Lexington organization to tap into. But please express all of our appreciation for everything that Rebecca and Joanne are doing to stay focused on downtown, to continue their function of promoting and getting people downtown. Clearly, if you've been downtown, it's not hard to find a place to park and business owners are more than glad, especially I think some of the jewelry stores and others to work by appointment. So they are, they are not shut down. They're just eager for people to come and help sustain them, as Chuck pointed out. So thank you for that report, Leslie. Planning Commission.
We have not met, but we are meeting on next Thursday and we have quite a few items of business.
And you all will be taking advantage of this format and our passing the ordinance to, to meet electronically.
Yes, thank you.
So anybody can zoom in. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers.
Yeah, the Tourism Board met this morning virtually and adopted the resolution to engage in electronic meetings for essential business. And I covered some of this during our work session, but for Doug's benefit or anybody else who might have joined us. The Tourism Board voted to provide a discount to, or an abatement to the, the localities for the next five quarters, 20% refunds for the next three quarters and then 15% for the next two, the final two quarters in fiscal year 21. Something that came up. It was kind of a distressing data point. George Hugiu, Southern End, he said that their meal receipts since going to takeout only are about 20% of what their regular receipts would be. He also pointed out, or it's his belief that Southern End normally accounts for about 8% of all Lexington's meals taxes. I did not know that, that I, that's pretty interesting. Gene Clark shared some sobering information from the Horse Center, just looking at events that have already been canceled through mid-June. The Horse Center expects to lose $1.3 million. And the area will lose the benefit of over 9,500 visitors who would have attended those events. And that's all I have tonight.
Thanks for that bright shiny report, Dennis.
Better news.
Indeed. It's the grim reality that we're staring down at this point and a reminder that we're all in this together and working together will be able to survive it. Rockbridge Area Department of Social Services, Ms. Hens.
Yes, the board met yesterday also virtually, also passed an ordinance to conduct meetings electronically. And Dinah Clark, the director, reported that many of the staff now are working from home. I think there are about seven employees that are still working in the office. But things seem to be going smoothly, pretty well considering the circumstances. We also, she also has some good news to report that last March or this past month in March, they were able to place or have five adoptions. And that's, that's quite a number of adoptions in one month. So that was very encouraging. And we also had on, on the meeting call, Baskerville, that's the architectural firm that we that's conducting the RFP and the surveys for our building. And that, they gave us an update. We had two surveys go out. One was called the Big Picture Survey and that went to board members. And, and then the programming survey, which is a much bigger survey, went, went to the staff. In about two weeks, they want to wrap this up, the surveys, and then, you know, put, pull that data survey information together to put together a very comprehensive RFP. The Dyna said that they will be sending the big picture survey to the three localities managers. And then you can take a look and they'd like your feedback on that survey. And maybe possibly share that with council members. So I guess that'll be up to Jim. And then we also went into closed session. Oh, I, and we did vote, came out of closed session, voted to take in one child from Rockbridge County into care. And we also finally voted to we passed the lease agreement. We agreed or voted on that. And that is a two-year agreement, begins April 1 and goes till March 31st, 2022 for $9,000 a month. And that square footage for that building, I think it was asked before, but it's about 14,400 square feet. And then that 5,200 additional square feet on, on square footage on the first floor. So that's, that'll be for two years with some improvements, painting and things like that. So, so that's in place now. And I think that's all I have for, for the report.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions, members of council? Very good. Excited to hear about those adoptions and positive things going on in that arena. Raro, Mr. Ziegler.
The Raro Board of Directors met on Wednesday, April 8th. We met via telephone conference call. We hit on our normal issues of honestly, we had talked about our registration numbers for spring sports, but then we, we shared them amongst ourselves. They were very positive, but then of course we had to take the action during that meeting of I guess cancelling our, all of our spring seasons. We had talked about postponing it, tried to have abbreviated seasons. But just given that all of our seasons typically conclude by the end of the school year, the, the school year, we just didn't see it possible to, to leave that, that window open. We didn't think that was fair to families and so on. So we we're, we had to cancel spring. We're sending communications to all of our folks and offering different forms of refunds or carrying forward potentially the registration fee to certain items, maybe next year. But we're taking care of that tomorrow, today through communications. So very difficult to do that. We're holding out hope that maybe in June or July, we'll be able to have kind of a play days where we'll just put the word out that on, we'll have a clinic on a Saturday or an evening and just let kids come for free, you know, not charged, that we can do something that, that gets kids playing sports. But we're, we're upset to have to do that. But other than that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Threshold has not met since our last regular meeting.
Very good. Under my report, I do not have any names to bring forward for appointment. And I've got nothing. Nothing but praise for our churches, our first responders, our staff, the city crews, the creative businesses downtown, the tenacity that folks have shown in keeping their businesses open. And the resiliency of our community coming together and working hard together. It's been refreshing and enlightening, I think, to, to watch. And I know you joined me in giving praise to all those folks for the good things that they're doing and, and staying focused on being healthy and safe and getting to the, the other side of this virus. It was especially poignant. And for those of you who aren't paying attention or keeping score, Chuck is hairless on his face, which I believe was done in solidarity for downtown businesses. So Chuck, thanks for your sacrifice and good to see your smiling face again. I also wanted to update you, despite the circumstances, mayors and chairs had suggested not meeting. And I said, please can we, let's compare notes and talk a little bit. Buena Vista obviously is hurting with a lot of things they've got going on and significant cuts that they're making and staring down a big tax increase. Rockbridge County's got a huge hole in their budget. And it was nice to get together with Dan Lyons and Spencer and Jay and Jim and myself. And just go through and talk about the, the circumstances. That's part of where the, the piece from tourism came from. We collaborated and suggested that we'd like to see, like to ask tourism to shoot towards 20%. We talked about the MSA, the jail, Blue Ridge Resource Authority, in particular, 911, those are for the most part enterprise funds and we don't have a lot of flexibility there. But with Jim and Spencer and Jay being on most of those boards, they, they've squeezed and are recycling paper clips and bringing their own pens and paper and making things happen there. And then the, the future of the library, one of the heartbeats of our community and provides a great deal of support to all of our citizens is reducing obviously a significant chunk. We've asked them for 10%. And unfortunately, Buena Vista, I think, has already reduced them or proposed to reduce them $35,000. But we talked about, as you may have read in the paper, the Rockbridge County Fair will be conducted in Glasgow this year, assuming that we're beyond the virus and can get together more than 10 at a time. And one of the other pieces, which I don't know if it's made the news yet or not, but the my, my names are probably wrong, but I think Ty has mentioned it to us before. There are two somewhat commissions looking at fire and EMS. And they're looking to consolidate those for the volunteer and the paid staff, just having one single fire and rescue commission. And that'll be taking effect in probably the next, probably the first of the fiscal year, if I understood correctly. But again, it was terrific to, to, to meet. But again, it was terrific to, to, to meet with the folks. Sorry, my, my notes are a little out of order. The other pieces that, if I remember correctly, nonprofits, Buena Vista has completely eliminated any non-discretionary contributions. So any organizations that aren't required, they're, the funding is gone. And Jay referenced specifically the Mountain Days, much like Lime Kiln, they would pledge $4,000, I think, and get the state grant, and that was the seed money to put on Mountain Days, and it's questionable whether or not Mountain Days will be able to happen because that money is is gone from that standpoint. We also talked about compensation as we had in our work session. Buena Vista and Rockbridge County, Buena Vista is absolutely not making any pay increases. Rockbridge County is talking about it, but they're looking more at furlough, reduce time, or even eliminating positions more so than raising salaries. And I'll conclude by saying it, we've got great neighbors and a great community that we live in, and I was, I'm very grateful for the cooperation amongst the the leadership of the three entities, working together and trying to make the best decisions financially and for our community. So it's a treat and a privilege to represent you all at that on a monthly basis. Unless you have any questions, I will, any, I will scoot through. No questions? I'll bounce pass to Jim.
Just had to find my unmute button.
Certainly.
Anyway, you may recall that on March 19th, when we were scheduled for the meeting, we were going to have a presentation from the Washington Lee Architect, Mr. U Latimer, about changes that were being envisioned on campus. Of course, when the meeting was scheduled, he did not join us, of course, we weren't there, and he will be coming back to us on May 21st to give us a briefing or an update on some of the changes that are still envisioned in the master plan or plan for Washington Lee. Earlier this week, I heard from the National League of Cities, there's federal legislation that's been sponsored that would provide direct aid to smaller communities such as ours, and that aid could be used to replace some of the revenues that we have lost, not just additional expenses for COVID-19. Currently, nearly 100% of those costs that are, are those programs that are out there for the, for the nation don't provide any kind of aid or assistance to us to replace revenues that have been lost. So this would be an additional revenue that's, excuse me, additional legislation that's being proposed in Washington, asked me to send a letter to Congressman Klein, and I did that. So hopefully that'll receive some attention in Washington, and we might be receiving some assistance in that regard. City staff recently have been reviewing the intersection of Jackson and White Street. We've had some complaints there. There has been some changes made by I believe a neighbor who put up a privacy fence, and that area has a very narrow intersection already, and based on what we saw there, the Police Department and Public Works, we're going to be putting in a three-way stop at that intersection, very narrow street, very poor turn radius, and the visibility and sightlines are not good. So and keep it safe. That's one of the changes we'll be making soon. Fire Department's been busy helping our neighbors with the sunshine and dry conditions and high winds. Recently, they were fighting a fire down in the Glasgow area and up in Robinson's Gap, spent the better portion of the day earlier last week, fighting a fire or two fires in those areas. Jeff Martone and his crew have been working tirelessly with personnel from the Virginia Military Institute to try and identify where we could be losing water in and via my campus. There are some old areas of their infrastructure that they plan on abandoning. They had hoped to abandon those this spring, and they've been delayed with that work like everybody else has been delayed because of COVID-19. So those areas won't be abandoned until sometime in midsummer, July or August. In the meantime, we've had some devices there, technology that can go down into the pipes and actually listen for leaks and detect leaks in the pipes. Thus far, we've not been successful. We've also shut down different areas of the campus and the different water mains, trying to detect where there was differentials and flows to also see if we could discover where those leaks might exist, and again, have not been successful. But we are going to continue working, and again, VMI, their personnel's been very helpful, and perhaps we can find out, as you know, we're being billed for water in excess to what we're selling and losing some money there, and we want to find out why that's the case. Right now, that seems to be our best opportunity for identifying the volumes of water that we're losing, apparently losing, but we've had no success finding that. We continue to see, receive updates, as I think many of us do on communications about COVID-19 and federal programs that are there, there to aid our businesses, our nonprofits, and we forward those notifications and those program changes to our nonprofit agencies, Main Street Lexington, Chamber of Commerce, and others to try and help them identify what might be there for them. And I want to give special thanks to Ty Dickerson because he spends a lot of time identifying particular programs and opportunities that are available for nonprofits, for religious organizations, for businesses, and we then forward those on. I will say though, a little good news, while most of the federal aid is not available to cities, we did find one particular program where we could get some aid, and that was in our Medicare transport program, and we received $15,764 in that regard. And I want to credit again Ty Dickerson, Pat Delaney, and Gary Swink for finding that program and applying for that, and we received that small amount of money almost immediately. We're also, of course, in the midst of the census, the 2020 census, and we're working hard with Rockbridge County again, City of Buena Vista, our local or regional partners, to try and make sure we have complete count in the area. We're also working with the NAACP chapter, the local chapters, reaching out to the disadvantaged and some of the minority communities in our area to try and make sure that they also participate in the census and inform them how important it is in all the community that we all count because federal and state dollars are portioned based on our population, but everyone does count very dramatically. Recently, I saw something from VPAS, the Valley Program for Aging Services, to notify their partners and the public at large that they have assistance available for older citizens in our, in our area. They can provide food assistance, and they can provide resources in for medical care and pharmacies, transportation to medical care pharmacies, information referral, support with chronic disease issues, and also a phone check-ins for those who are shut in. So if if somebody out there needs that kind of aid, they can call up Laney Nix at the Maury River Senior Center, or Alicia Wrights at the Bath County Senior Center. And please, there's, there's help for those older folks out there in the community. Another positive thing that's occurred recently is that our safe routes to school improvements at Little Burn Downing School is moving forward. VDOT will provide a notice to proceed about May 1st, and then those improvements will take place. Most of those improvements are in front of the school sidewalk and crosswalk improvements to make it safer for children to walk to and from school, but there's also a sidewalk portion that runs into Thompson's Knoll behind the school, so people will be able to walk to and from Thompson's Knoll to school. Another thing we're looking at now, of course, is the primary, the season is upon us, so we'll have absentee voting beginning April 24th through June 6th, Monday through Friday, as well as Saturday, May 30th. And our city registrar, Jane Yow, said her office will be open from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and you can contact her for ballot at 540-462-3706, if you have questions or want to vote absentee. As Councilmember Hens mentioned, I did receive a email this evening from Dinah Clark about the Baskerville study and the improvements that are perhaps being considered there, and there is a link for council members to participate in actually giving some input into that or feedback into that, those possible improvements, and I will be sending that along to you as City Council, either this, this evening yet or tomorrow morning. And that's the end of my report. Mr. Mayor, you have to unmute.
Thank you for the reminder. Jared, give us some good news.
I'm taking it as no news is good news. I have no report.
Fantastic.
Can I ask a question to the city manager, please?
Yes, sir.
I understand we'll be discussing the possible excusing of interest and penalties on meals and lodging taxes that were collected March, April, May, reported April, May, June, is that, that we'll be discussing that next meeting?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? Or for the good of the cause? Any new business? Hearing none, I'll just echo Leslie's direction of tune in 7 to 9 tomorrow night after you carried out your order from a local restaurant. Please shop downtown. Mother's Day is just around the corner. It's not too late to send an Easter present to, to a friend or family, and would encourage everyone to reach out and help someone. We're all hurting and having difficult times with businesses shut and the hairdressers and barber shops being closed down, another non-essential, and Lexington just isn't the same without the buzz of the students around here. So do your part to help, help your neighbors and work through this time, and we'll look forward to getting to the other side. And to confirm, Jim, if I remind me the date, is it Tuesday, the 28th that you're proposing for our next Finance Committee meeting?
Budget workshop? I believe, well, it's a week from tonight, the 23rd, we've got one scheduled.
Oh, right.
We probably will not hold that one unless there are really some information that we get from the state by that time. What I am proposing is that we meet, schedule an additional meeting for May 5th, Tuesday, May 5th.
Okay. Cinco de Mayo, thank you, that's we'll, we'll target that. So assuming we're going to continue to plan for the 23rd, but if it's not any new news from the state, we'll postpone that and reconvene on the 5th. Very good. Thank you all for being here this evening, and those that phone in to listen, we appreciate your interest and curiosity. Doug, appreciate you being here to to cover and experience this virtual meeting with us and encourage people to, I think they can pick up the advocate at Kroger's and other outlets where it can't be delivered like it used to be. So with that, thank you all. Have a great night, and we'll look forward to seeing you soon. We will stand adjourned. Thank you.